For the pledge, Captain.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Like I mentioned before, this was a special emergency meeting. Does anybody listen cell for citizen presentation? We should not have citizen presentation?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Not, nobody registered? Okay. Next item?
Item four, special meeting agenda items. Item 4A, report and recommendation by the Office of the City Manager in reference to credit line to pay for post-storm recovery from Hurricane Irma.
Okay, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to just report something for the record. I got some that has nothing to do with the issue, but I think it's important to, that the record reflect that as of this afternoon, at around 2:45 in the afternoon, we have eighty-two percent of the customers of the city of West Miami already receiving power. That means there's about five hundred and thirty or five hundred and forty homes that they have not been able to connect, but will be connected by the end of the weekend. All your constituents that have brought concerns to you because of the lack of power, all of them, as of this afternoon, have been reported to Armando Fernandez, who's the liaison between the city of West Miami and Florida Power and Light. They are working diligently. We have over sixty trucks in the city. They're doing tree trimming. They're doing connections. They're doing transformer replacements where necessary. So I know it's been a very terrible and hot week, but they are diligently working to restore power. Now, I'm going to get into the issue of the line of credit. This issue comes to the mayor and city commission as a result of the city's inability to financially foot the bill with the cash in hand right now that we have. Even if we combined all of our accounts, we have some restricted cash situations and not enough cash to deal with the storm recovery efforts. As in the past, after Hurricane Andrew and Hurricane Katrina and Wilma, the city had recovery efforts that we needed to accomplish, and we have come to you consistently on those occasions to ask you to authorize us to apply for a line of credit so that we can meet the expenses associated with payroll, with equipment, with manpower, with contracting services, to remove the debris, to take care of the limbs, or they call them the hangers, which are part of the limbs that did not fall on the ground, but they're hanging and they pose a liability to the city, and obviously, some stump removals as authorized by FEMA. We went back and we looked at the past costs for these storms in recovery efforts, and we are anticipating a project of approximately $1.5 million. So I went out to area banks that we do business with, that are qualified by the State of Florida Department of Banking and Financial Services, and qualified as qualified public depositories. We cannot, as a municipal government, do business with any bank that is not designated by the State of Florida as a public qualified depository. And so, three banks submitted-
Hold on a minute. Before the manager proceeds, I should say that according to the procedure, in our code section 3.06, print two, print B, print two, it says, "Any matter placed on the agenda of a meeting at the meeting and not included in the published agenda of the meeting must pass by affirmative vote by three members of the council." An affirmative vote of four-fifth, four-fifth of the city council will be required in the following instances. Number one, to issue bonds or borrow money. So this has to be approved by four of the five commissioners and mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vialos, and I was going to ask you to read that at the tail end of it, but that's perfect. So Banco Popular, it's called Popular Community Bank. Actually, the lady who submitted a proposal to the city is a city resident. She offered a letter of interest for an amount of $1.5 million on behalf of Popular Community Bank with a variable interest rate indicative as of this date of 3.83 percent, with a second option of a fixed rate of 4.125 percent for one year. The proposal also contemplates a commitment fee and some closing costs and legal fees that probably will amount to about $15,000 with a closing date of on or before October 31st, 2017. We went to Total Bank also, and Total Bank issued a letter of interest. And by the way, you are, have been provided, and these came in in between yesterday and today, you've been provided with copies of all these letters of interest. Total Bank came in offering us a $1 million line of crediting with a floating interest of a rate of 4.25 percent, a loan commitment fee that applies to the proposal, and the amount of $10,000 plus actual costs and expenses payable to the bank on the closing date. They also, they did not commit to a closing date per se, but they said they would work diligently if selected for the loan with the city. And the third one is City National Bank, who also issued a letter of interest and what they call a term sheet for a credit line in the amount of $1.5 million with an interest rate of 2.25 percent. This rate is fixed until the maturity of the loan, which is one year. The loan fees in this proposal are waived, and there are no prepayment penalties in the loan. Closing expenses are estimated at $5,000 with a final approval and commitment to the loan to be completed within five days after the city's acceptance of the terms and conditions of the loan. Bank representatives for City National are here in the audience. All three letters of interest are subject to a one-year credit line loan with interest payments to be made only on a monthly basis, and the lump sum of what we borrow on that credit line to be paid upon that one-year maturity date. Having reviewed these proposals with the finance director, it is our recommendation that we accept the proposal issued by City National Bank, which is the lowest of the three interest rates provided. I welcome your questions. You have letters of interest or term sheet letters attached to the loan, and without this upfront money, it's going to be very difficult for the city to accomplish restoration efforts, and I think we need to address those immediately. There are several concerns. Number one, we're in the middle, we're actually in the peak season of hurricane season. Number two, obviously, we want to restore the public right-of-ways and ensure that the sidewalks are clean, safe, and so that pedestrians can use it and our city residents can return to their lifestyle. And we have a public welfare issue. The longer we leave all that debris on the side of the road and the swale, obviously, you're facing rats and rodents to get in there, and obviously, it becomes a safety and a welfare. If all goes well, and if this commissioner makes certain decisions this evening or authorizes our office to proceed with certain marching orders, we're probably going to be in a position to start this process sometime early to midweek next week. But the first order of business would be to get this loan approved so that the bank can start working on it.
Before we entertain any discussion or any further questions to the manager, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
With a blank amount, and then we-
With the amount and City National Bank as recommended by the city manager. For a B resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami declaring an emergency and authorizing the city manager to borrow a cap of $1.5 million from City National Bank for Hurricane Irma, storm-related damage and debris removal citywide, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager?
I have-
Commissioner Suarez.
Okay, now, it's obvious that we need a credit line. This is something that we need. That's number one. And number two, I seen all the correspondence, and I know that Mrs. Leon, our finance director, she has been studying this?
Yes, sir.
And is her recommendation?
Yes, sir.
So after all this knowledge I got from this, I make a motion.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been second. Can you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Blanes, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just to recognize, the City National Bank representatives here is Odalis. I don't remember your last name.
Peña.
Peña. Peña. And Amanda Serna. They are the banking officers for City National Bank that have been working with the city, and it should be noted that the city recently awarded them through a competitive bidding also the financing of your public services building and the motor pool. So City National is definitely partnering with us and helping us save a little bit of money. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item?
Item 4C, recommendation by city manager to execute contract with blank for Hurricane Irma storm-related damage and debris removal citywide per RFP. Request for proposal number 2017-0911, 2017 specifications.
Mr. Mayor, before you award this, I would ask that you authorize the city clerk to read the bid tabulation into the record of the bid opening this afternoon.
Okay. Please do.
Of course, Mr. Mayor. At 4 o'clock today, Friday, September 15, 2017, the following bids were open publicly for the Hurricane Irma storm debris removal as follows. By the company, RAS Investments, $15.50 per cubic yard. WCC Services, $18 per cubic yard. WL Trucking, $8 per cubic yard. All Florida Land Cleaning, $38 per cubic yard. RIV Equipment Services, no price was submitted. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Penna?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. As the city clerk explained, we have five bidders. One that proposed no bid at $8, at no bid, dating enter price. Another one that proposed $8 a cubic yard, and another one at $15.50, and the other one at $18, correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
And then the highest of them all, $38, which is all Florida land clearing. The specifications in the bid were to include a price for complete disposal, cutting them, the tree limbs that are hanging, getting rid of all the debris that's on the right-of-way, and taking it to a FEMA-approved dump site. Include tipping fees, include everything. We don't want to see it. Once it's gone, we don't want to worry about whether you took it to the proper place or not. And we have to report that to FEMA once we turn in our request for reimbursement. So, under that circumstance, the only bid that I feel comfortable with, and the committee that we reviewed this afternoon, the bids, is all Florida clearing. In 2005, we paid $36 a cubic yard to get rid of the debris back then, and that was twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, at $36 a cubic yard. There's no way that any of the other companies that I, that are in here, I feel comfortable, that are including the disposal fees. Since they're not including the disposal fees, I classify that as disqualified from the bid. There's only one that included the disposal fee at $38 a cubic yard. They went exactly on what my request was in the bid, and that's the one I feel comfortable with recommending. And that would be all Florida land clearing at $38 a yard. We have not conducted any references. We'll do that on Monday. The county is closed today. They've worked for the county before, so there's no way for us to get their references. We will check their references. We will check their bonding issues, that they have to submit a performance and payment bond, and we will come back to the manager and advisor what we find. If at that point we feel comfortable with it, that would be the company that we recommend going to contract with.
Okay. Who was a part of the committee that reviewed the bids?
Myself, the city manager, and Mr. Nancy from TYL.
The engineer. Okay. So you believe the rest do not include the-
There's no way.
Disposal?
There's no way they could include the disposal fees at either $15.50 or $18.
Okay.
Mr. Penna, this is the company that we used last storm?
No. We, it was advertised on our city webpage, and we contacted those companies that showed interest either by phone or by email to our city. All the other ones, the only way they would have known it had they gone to our webpage.
And you say during last storm, thirteen, fourteen years ago, we paid 36?
Thirty-six per yard.
And I remember that company did an excellent job.
They did an excellent job. However, in subsequent audits that we had with FEMA after the storm was over, they disallowed several things that were done to trucks in order to put more capacity. So we've taken care of that in this bid. The truck cannot be altered in any way. It has to be exactly what the truck is capable of carrying, because that got disallowed, and we ended up paying monies back to FEMA because of those.
Right.
Okay.
So I have a question.
So that's only $2 off from thirteen, fourteen years ago. 36? This is 38?
Okay. Commissioner Suarez?
I have a question. Juan, you have been here for many, many years.
Thirty-seven, to be exact.
Yeah, well, but-
Andrew and the other storms.
Okay. So according to all this specification I was reading here, you think, I know, $8, this is something ridiculous. This is something, none of this, I don't know, I don't want to talk about that. But these $15.50 and $18, you think they cannot, they will be unable to produce all this service that we need?
Not include the tipping fees. There's no way.
Did our bid specify to include the tipping?
I'll read you exactly what the bid says for. "The contractor shall supply all labor, transportation materials, equipment necessary for the entire and proper substantial completion of this work, and be accountable for the safe and proper and responsible operation of tree trimming of damaged tree limbs, removal of tree trunks under two feet in diameter, removal of tree debris and storm debris, and the safe transportation to a FEMA-approved disposal site, and shall remove all equipment upon completion, and shall perform the work in the best workmanlike manner."
Yeah, that doesn't sound like it will cover that.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission? Okay.
Mr. Penna, I do have one question.
Yes.
Because I'm just going by what you said about the last, about Wilma, that we had to pay FEMA back, or we didn't get as much money from FEMA because there was an issue?
The trucks back then, the haulers, in order to, they were individual haulers, the truckers, the actual truck owner of the truck. So in order to get more capacity and make more money, they removed the back door and they extended the bed of the truck, another five or 10 feet to get more cubic feet for, you know, per load. However, since the truck wasn't designed for that and you couldn't really calculate the cubic feet, FEMA came back five years later and said, "We're disallowing that." So that portion of that add-on to the trucks was disallowed to a tune of $56,000 that we had to end up paying back.
And all that will be in our contract with them. You'll make sure that-
Truck certifications are required in this contract.
Anything in your wildest imagination that can be done so that we make sure it's in the contract?
That's exactly why we put it that way.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. What's your take? As far as the contract-
I have to go with recommendation of the administration. I was not a participant in the selection committee, however-
You did review the contract.
I did review not only the contract itself, I made additions and deletions from the contract, which was applied to the manager and which was applied to the administration as well.
And it's, and it's, you feel good with it? We cover all the bases?
As far as I'm concerned, yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Manager?
Mayor, I, obviously, it seems to me that we have the possibility of having a lower bid. However, at the end of the day, the bid does not entertain the disposal, the transfer and disposal fee of that debris. And that is what, exactly what Mr. Penna is advising, that the bid did not contemplate the cumulative price. It sort of breaks it down, and it does not allow for the window, there's no window of opportunity for us to go back and renegotiate or amend the bid or allow the bidder to amend the bid. So if you were to tally the two prices that we received, it appears that we have a, another bidder that is lower than what Mr. Penna is recommending. However, the bidder failed to include the totality of his or her price in the bid document, and that is why Mr. Penna believes that that bidder should be disqualified because it did not include the cumulative price.
Okay.
Again, not disqualified, but-
Not disqualified, but-
Consider the responsiveness of the other.
Responsiveness and completeness-ness of the bid.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Mr. Penna, will your department be monitoring these trucks and-
Yes, it will.
On a daily basis, as long as they're out there?
Every truck that leaves the city will be-
Your crew will be out there monitoring.
The ticket has to be signed by one of our guys.
Perfect. And when they pick up, can you be sure that they leave the street as clean as possible, not leave?
Usually-
Do their best.
It's, they'll-
Or we're going to come behind them and do that.
They'll pick up everything that's tree-related and limb-related, but remember, the longer these trees sit out there, the more leaves are going to fall off-
Perfect.
-the limbs when they pick them up. So in the end, we've already started street sweeping.
We'll come behind them.
In the end, we'll be doing more street sweeping, so-
But you will monitor-
Eventually, we'll get back to that.
-these trucks that are going around and picking up. Perfect. Thank you.
We will.
And Mr. Penna, this company, All Florida Land Cleaning, you say they don't work for the county?
They did work for the county back in 2005 and 2006 for hurricanes, to the tune of one of $2 million and the other one of a million something. This still has to be verified.
And it should, we should have, it should be noted that not only will the city be picking up the debris that sits there today, as soon as we take the debris out, they will be property owners that are going to start the cleanup process inside their yard and take more trimmings out and obviously, cuttings and everything that was damaged by the storm. We've published a notice on how they should put their disposables outside. I mean, debris is debris, and a refrigerator is definitely, falls under a different category. So there's going to be more. This process is going to take us a good 30 to 45 days with any good timing and maybe even through the holidays. This is going to be a project.
Actually, their contract in August for Katrina was $6 million, and in October for Wilma was $4 million.
With the county?
Yes.
With the county.
Just occurred to me, Mr. Mayor, that the citizen of the city of West Miami should also be noticed that any violation, subsequent violation of their attempt, or the city's attempt to clear the debris would be subject to scrutiny by the court enforcement officer, that, you know, all of the actual debris coming from trees, et cetera, should be taken out now, and we should not encourage people, we should encourage people not to put refrigerators or any other items that are not contemplated or paid reimbursed by FEMA.
We, believe me, we trying very hard.
Yeah.
And we had to move quickly because as we speak, court enforcement is out there finding illegal dumping. So in other words, people come from all apart to dump in our city. So, anyway.
You know, Mr. Mayor, considering that thirteen, fourteen years ago, we paid $36, and now, you know, this proposal is for 38, only two more dollars, and then the others are relatively pretty low. I mean, there's something not right about this. So, I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that they did not include the whole, the whole fee.
Okay.
And maybe they were just trying to get, get us on the hook for the contract and then-
I will not speculate. I will, I will-
What else can it be, right?
Well, we're not here to speculate. We're here to make a decision, one way or the other, based on advice by council, advice by whoever reviewed the contract. Okay.
It seemed right to me.
Okay. But I think, by the way, the resolution has not been, has not been read yet, so perhaps we need to do that before anybody jumps and says, "Make a motion," or something like that. Go ahead.
Item 4D, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with All Florida Land Cleaning in connection with Hurricane Irma storm-related damage and debris removal citywide pursuant to RFP number 2017-0911, 2017 specifications, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Mayor, just, excuse me, just one more thing I'd like to add. It says on termination
contract, they put 30, 35 days. I would extend it to 60 days just in case, for some reason, there's another storm that comes through.
Okay. Attorney, is that, Mrs. Attorney?
Mr. Vialos.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Extension of contract, what do we have?
From 45 days to 60 days.
From 35 days, they put 60 days.
35 days to 60 days. Okay.
Mayor, I want to make a clarification here because there are bidders here, the lower price, but according with that, the director of Public Works is saying to us, in this case, it's not the price, what the rule is saying, it's the service involved with the price. And if the lower prices do not involve the services that the Public Works request by the department, their department, that's why the lower prices are not, in this case, the most interesting. It's the service. And we have the experience the last time that we had to pay back FEMA five years later because we didn't know, we did not, were aware of those things. And now, Mr. Penna wants to be aware that everything is covered. So even the prices lower, the lower prices, I make a motion to Florida Land, the recommendation from Public Works.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I have two seconds.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez or Vice Mayor Blanca?
Vice Mayor, I take it. Vice Mayor.
And then the motion, Commissioner Blanes, have you voted?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Thank you.
I'm the president in honor of RAS. If I can say a few words to clarify-
All right, wait, hold on a second. Let me, let me, before you continue, because this is a closed meeting, let me, counsel, can I entertain a comment from the audience, or this is a-
It's up to the commission to, and the chair to hear or not hear comments at this point.
Okay, all right.
You have something to put to the public?
Say your name for the record, and who do you represent? Say the name, the company, and the address, please.
Okay, my name is Pedro Pelais at 6955 Northwest 77th Avenue, Suite 204, Miami, Florida, and I'm the president of a company called RAS Construction, which is the company that offered the $15.50 per cubic yard. I want to make clear, Mr. Mayor and honorable commissioners, that the scope of work in this RFP was very specific. And Mr. Blanes, when he started looking at it, was very clear on that. There is nothing in this RFP that mentions tipping fee. It mentions labor material and equipment. In my, in our proposal, in our proposal today, we specify in our proposal- In my, in our proposal, in our proposal today, we specify, in our proposal, this price do not, does not include tipping fee, which will be passed to the city at net cost. Please see attached tipping fee schedule, we put the tipping fee schedule. Now, if you, we, we are, you, the RFP talks about cubic yards. The tipping fee is based on tonnage. The tonnage can vary. If you put light limbs into a truck, eighteen, eighteen-yard truck, the, 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 the truck could weigh four tons. Now, if you still putting, if you start putting, uh, trunks and heavy wood from the trees, it could be eight tons. So, it's very hard to specify on, 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 based on your RFP, what, what the, the, the price could be. Now, if we add to my fifteen-fifty, the, the, the cost of the tonnage, I'm at thirty-five dollars. I'm at thirty, it's three dollars less than, than what the, the, the other company is, is charging. It's, it's just, I think that the RF, the, the, the RFP did not at all specify tipping fee, and it was clear in my proposal, it's here, that tipping fee was not included, and it's not a standard in the, in the industry for contracts to pay the tipping fee. Typically, the, the municipality, the city pays for the tipping fees, not, not the contractor. And I, 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 I wanted to make sure that you were totally clear on, on what you're getting because it's not, I don't think is, is correct, uh, what, what, what this other company, uh, uh, presented and awarded based on the RFP. The RFP is very clear. The specificity of the, of the, of the contract never mentioned tipping fees. It's, it's labor, material, and equipment. We're picking up trees, vegetation, and when, and, and the proposal is very clear. Tipping fee is not included, we will add it, we will add it, and I, and we included the, the, the day-county tipping fee schedule. Now, if you, I, I can do it for thirty-five dollars, but I was never told that tipping fee was included. It's not in the RFP, it's very clear.
Okay, I, I, I think we got it. At this point, we sitting over here, we don't know the language, we, you know, basically, we have to follow advice from different, you know, whoever, it, it makes sense, at least to me, at this moment, but again, I gotta go back to Council, I gotta go back to Mr. Penna, and, and, and by the way, this, this, I don't want this to become, uh, an arguing, argumental thing, so...
No, it's...
But, but I, I really appreciate, I really appreciate your clarification, and then, of course, you know, my next question will be to Council, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, thank you. But I, I understand that you bring an explanation, but really, what the, the Director of Public Works in black and white is saying to us and put it here, and your proposal, I know the same. So even you understand in your way, and the Public Works of the city was not understanding that, in your way, was understanding in the normal way, that's, well, that's why... It's only one way, it's only one way, it's what the, Commissioner, it's only one way, what the, the RFP says. The RFP doesn't mention tipping fee at all. I understand, but I, but we have to go by the Public Works. No, I understand that you got, but, but you gotta follow, but what I'm telling you is that the tipping fee was not part of the RFP, that's all. It, it was not part of the RFP, so we were, we were handicapped, we were handicapping our response because now you're saying that the tipping fee was included, it was not included. Even though my proposal, even though my proposal is very clear that tipping fee is not included, that we will pass on, we will pass on the, the cost to the city, our net cost, with the county's schedule, which is thirty-five dollars, it's three dollars per yard less than what this other company's doing, which maybe you got fifteen thousand, between ten and fifteen thousand yards here. That's a lot of money for a small municipality.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Pedro.
Council, uh, I just wanted to... Do we continue, uh, is anything you wanna add to this?
Mr. Mayor, there was a motion, there was a second, there was a vote, uh, there was a recommendation. I was now part of the selection committee, so I would have to stand by the recommendation and the vote by the, uh, City Council.
Or the vote.
Okay. Thank you. Next item?
Item 4E, Report by City Manager and Director of Public Works in reference to service repair of 2008 Sterling Altech Bucket Truck and Estimate for Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if I may yield to the Director of Public Works, who does not have good financial news on the issue of the repairs to the truck.
He never has good news.
He's a bundle of joy.
The, the, the only good news you have is, I, I gotta compliment you with what you have done so far in the cleaning up of West Miami. You know, the, the service is always the best. The, the news about, the money is the, the one that we don't like.
Mr. Mayor, the only way to get to those points is you gotta use the equipment. And when you use the equipment, this equipment is ten years old, and it needed servicing. Uh, we didn't feel that it was, uh, safe. And you saw what happened with our last bucket truck when we didn't feel it was safe, and we kept using it. So, this time, we took it back to its original manufacturer, and he submitted a quote there to repair all the problems it has for twenty thousand dollars. And, uh, at this point, I believe we need to do the services, because otherwise, we'll get it back from him, but he'll be regtagged that we can't use the, the aerial platform on it.
And we know what happened when we don't have the proper equipment.
Yep.
We don't have to go into history.
Sorry, what's a new truck cost?
A new truck, is that, uh, for a bucket truck, you're probably looking at about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty thousand.
Answer my question.
In the scheme of things, it's a drop in the bucket.
I don't buy bucket trucks every day, so I just had to ask, what does a bucket truck cost? Okay, thank you, sir.
It's a drop in the bucket, the repairs.
Drop in the bucket, got it.
How about leasing?
It's the same. You're gonna, you're gonna eventually not own the equipment, and you're gonna end up paying probably fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a month for a truck, whether you use it or not.
This truck is paid for one hundred percent, paid, paid for.
Yeah, but at that point, the truck's not worth much, because it's got all kinds of problems, and mechanical problems, so then we need to get a new one.
Eventually, we will, but with these repairs...
Yeah, it's only ten years old, with these repairs, you're going to put the truck in brand-new condition again.
So we should begin a lot more...
So you're saying it's worth it?
Of course. I won't be up here with it.
I stand corrected, okay, I, I, all right.
Uh, Commissioner Suarez?
Let me, let me explain something, by the way, we're talking about this.
Commissioner, the microphone, closer to you.
Let me tell you something, that we're talking about this, that's the, the bucket, you know, the, you know how much it costs, Rodriguez?
He just told me.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the trash truck.
But we're talking about the bucket truck.
It's about three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I know, but we're talking about the bucket truck.
No, this is something new for you.
Oh, you let me know, oh, yes, thank you, sir.
For your knowledge, for your knowledge.
Thank you, sir, I like to know a lot about garbage and trash. I like to learn a lot about garbage and trash, thank you.
For the trash collectors, with the pressure...
Three hundred thousand?
Around three hundred thousand. Ask one.
And we'll be coming soon for that, too.
Very expensive, this equipment, very expensive.
Mr. Penn, I'm gonna have to put you in timeout.
Okay, so, so...
Thank you, sir.
So what, what are we talking about? How much money?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, thirty-seven dollars, to put it back into service.
Twenty thousand.
This, this truck has been out of service for almost a month now?
Correct.
We've needed it. Do we have the money, Madam Manager?
The money would have to, uh, we would actually have to deplete the one hundred thousand dollar reserves that we had earmarked for the fiscal year-ending budget, September thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and seventeen. So we had a hundred thousand. If you pay it out of those, those funds, it's gonna deplete your reserves by twenty thousand dollars.
And that's what the money's for, time to start rebuilding those reserves again.
Just a point of clarification here, I thought we had two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
And that's for next year, next fiscal year. And the storm will take those two fifty, too.
Those two fifty, right. Can you, can you explain that, that you explained to me earlier?
Yes, sir, did, did you wanna vote on this issue, and then I'll explain that, or you feel that the explanation is necessary now so that I know when the mayor would like to take it up?
I think we can vote on it, but I, I, I think it would be...
I agree.
It would be us to, to hear her explanation about the two hundred fifty thousand dollar reserves for next year.
I make a motion for twenty thousand.
Wait, 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 we haven't read the resolution yet. Madam Clerk?
Item 4F, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager the expenditure of twenty thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seven cents in connection with the estimate for service repairs of 2008 Sterling Altech Bucket Truck payable to Altech Service Group, Inc., providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
I make a motion?
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote?
Funds coming from reserves.
To be paid from reserves in the, uh, budget for 2016, 2017.
Okay, uh, do you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Okay. Go to the order.
Wait.
I have something for the, go to the order.
I, I wanted the mayor, the...
Oh, the city manager, that, that's correct.
To give us the explanation of what could possibly happen, or most likely will happen, to our two hundred fifty thousand dollar reserve for...
Is it more bad news?
For next year. Sort of.
I don't, I don't think I want...
Sort of, sort of.
Go, go ahead, Madam Manager.
Um, you just authorized our office to pursue a credit line. We don't know the exact cause of the debris removal, but if we were to compare past storms and what the city spent in recovery efforts, we're looking at 1.5 to 2 million dollars. I reported at the August sixteenth meeting, without even realizing that we could face the potential of, of, of a storm, we reported to you that if a storm were to come our way, here's how the city, uh, gets reimbursed. We have a reimbursement that comes in from the federal, uh, at the federal level, from FEMA, of seventy-five percent of all costs that are eligible for recovery for storm-related events. Twelve and a half percent comes from the state of Florida, from the State Disaster Agency, which is FEMA dollars, but it trickles down to a state agency, and the city of West Miami is responsible for twelve and a half percent. This means that if you have, rounding it off, if we find ourselves with a project, a recovery effort, of, with a price tag of two million dollars, the twelve and a half percent is precisely two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is what I am proposing in the, that the city maintain in reserves for next fiscal year, after we take into consideration revenues versus projected expenses. And this is coming back to you on Wednesday, September twentieth, for a final public hearing on the budget. So, this storm has set us back to the potential, to a potential tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're talking about a storm today, and I wanna repeat this time after time so that we know that, or at least you are assured, that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars should not be contemplated for any type of expense until we're done with recovery efforts, because that could be the twelve and a half percent that is paid for by the city. And I mean, I can go on to, to, to entertain comments that I've heard from the community, we're not giving ice, we're not giving food, we're not giving water. We need to, we need to stick to the twelve and a half percent, minimize costs, and provide excellence in service at the same time. So how do you bring everything to a balance is very difficult. So, I, I'm sorry I'm bringing this to you to add to the bad news, and I'm, you know, I'm putting you on notice that the city is nowhere near out of the woods. A city that has less than seven hundred thousand dollars in total reserves in general funds, that's, that's, that, that's not enough to cover recovery efforts for a storm. So I'm, I'm bringing this to your attention so that you can deliberate on the budget coming up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify...
I, 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 go ahead, go ahead, and I have, um, I have three items.
Just a clarification, I'll be sure I have this correct in my mind. So, Madam Manager, this 1.5 million that we're getting a credit line for is solely for debris removal?
Debris, the hangers, the hauling, the dumping fees?
This bit that we just awarded.
It, it, it could be, uh, for equipment use, and it, it is the overtime expenses, eligible overtime expenses for the West Miami Police Department and Public Works Department that have been working around the clock.
Okay, so then the two hundred and fifty thousand in reserve that we're gonna have to use is for all other storm-related costs?
No, no.
No.
It is part of that debris removal, it is our share of the hundred percent.
It's our share of the debris removal, the twelve point five percent.
Twelve point five is our share of the hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Remember that this money is going to be reimbursed by FEMA after the work is done. All right, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not all of it, not all of it.
Not all of it.
The two hundred and fifty, we, we will not see it.
Eighty percent, which is very good.
Um, well, I have three items, so now, at this time, I'm only gonna talk about one because, uh, it entail money, um, but I think it's very important. And the one that I'm gonna talk about is, uh, as you all know, we have different pumps in the city. We have two stations that pump out the storm water, and those stations are equipped with backup generator. So, during a storm, you know, if everything goes well, and you know, sometimes it doesn't go well, uh, you know, we shouldn't have a problem there. Now, on the other hand, the sewer pumps, we have a total of four stations. During the storm, and they're not equipped with backup generator. So during the storm, one of the sewer pump lost power, and I personally saw one of the neighbors where, let's call it Blackwater, was coming back to his house. So, I think this is very, very important, that in the future, uh, we put some money for some backup generator, I, I, probably not four, because they could be interchange, you know, you can move it from one station to the other station. We are do, I mean, we are equipped with a pump that we can bypass that particular pump station that goes down, but the amount of time that takes, and the amount of effort that that takes cannot be compared with a ready station that you can put in a generator and have it within fifteen minutes, half an hour, you have it back in line after it goes down. So, uh, I, I've been out there. I've been out there talking to a lot of people, you know, uh, walking and, and, and taking pictures, and every time I, I saw a, a power line reporting to, to FPNL, being in contact directly with, uh, Armando, which at one point, he told me that he regretted, he gave me his cell phone number, and, uh, but nevertheless, you know, and then following up with, with everybody, that the lines were down, and of course, you know, we, we have a lot of people that are grateful for the work, but I'm sure that we're gonna have some people out there that are still not with power, and they're not happy, and, you know, we'll get to it as soon as possible. I, I, I have experience, I've been in this city since nineteen eighty-six, and I could tell you, from my experience, the, the quick effort that we have seen is unprecedented. I mean, I had never seen so many, so many trucks, you know, so many people out there taking care of, you know, the, the issue with the power. So, by now, we, it's what, a week?
Eighty-two percent of the city, as of 2:45 this afternoon, had power, and we still have about five hundred and forty properties that they're working on to restore power. I am sure that the eighty-two percent by tonight could be ninety percent, easily, and, and we're hoping for that.
So, go to the order, I think, uh, also, I wanna thank, uh, publicly, I wanna thank the, the Public Works Department, I wanna thank the Police Department for, for the tremendous effort, I wanna thank the administration, uh, and, and I am, I wanna also thank this commission for, for being out there, you know, talking to the residents and, and trying to help out during this, uh, critical situation. So, with that, anything I...
I want to...
Yes, sir.
I want to recognize Commissioner Blanes with the sandbags, and then Commissioner Rodriguez went there to help too.
Two days.
And then when I came to help, they told me, no, we don't need more help, so...
Did you say that?
They did a great job, but they, they...
I, I didn't say that, did you say that?
They made a great job, they told me, Luciano, go away, because it could do other things. So I went to the park to help too, and other people.
Commissioner Blanes, did you say that?
I really recognize your work.
I don't remember saying that.
Commissioner Blanes and Commissioner Rodriguez, very good, cool.
Thank you, Commissioner.